Good afternoon, everybody. We appreciate you being here at the Washington County Commission meeting and we'd like to welcome you all here. And starting out our meeting, we have two of our -- we're just talking about regulars. Tim Martin will give our invocation. He is from the Interfaith Council representing the Church of Jesus Christ. And also Dan Greathouse is here as well, president of the Vietnam Veterans Chapter here locally, and we thank him for his service and we appreciate Tim giving us our invocation.
Yeah, let me just, on behalf of the Interfaith Council, thank you for working this out. It's a great exposure, I think, for you to all the other churches. We have 22 churches in our faith council and they look forward to being here. I scheduled all those people to come and if they're not here, I just want to say it's Cheyenne's fault.
We appreciate them.
But it is, it's really good both ways, so thank you very much. Please join me in a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're so thankful this day for the opportunity we have to live in this wonderful land, in the special place of the world that we might enjoy the freedoms that we have, that we might enjoy the great camaraderie, the great community spirit that we have here in Washington County. We're thankful for these commissioners and their staff and the great service that they provide for the work that they put in. We're thankful for their desire to make our lives richer and we pray thy blessing to be upon them now as we begin this meeting, that they might feel thy inspiration, that they might know those things that will help serve the citizens of Washington County. We pray for a blessing upon those who might speak, that they might be able to present those thoughts in a manner that they've worked on, that they have thought about and would accurately represent the situation that they hope to describe. We're thankful for the many wonderful people that make our lives better, make our lives richer. And we ask thy blessing now to be upon all of us and be upon this meeting and this we ask in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Take all the lights, please. Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. So, both Commissioner Cox and Commissioner Rensstrom have been priding themselves on going paperless. I'm kind of sticking to the old school, but it's paid off right now.
Dean was going to go computerless, too.
Yeah, Commissioner Cox is going to go computerless there for a minute, so, well, thank you very much. Our first item on our agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, it becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull one property from the real property section, or the abatement section. It's account number 0917518. I just think we're, we need at least best some additional information. So, that'll be the first item on the agenda.
So, I would second the motion to approve the consent agenda with that exception.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. So, now we have this item before us, the property adjustment number 0917518.
So, I make a motion that we deny their request for abatement and send it back to them saying that they at least have to provide additional information.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to deny and request additional information. All in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. Our first item of business is consideration of purchase request, Mark Blanch.
Well, commissioners, our first one today is for the attorney's office. And this is some grant money they have to use online profile for some reports they have, and this is for $10,000. The next one we have is for emergency services, and this is grant money that they have, and this will be a regional purchase for the five counties, since we are the administrating county for that. And this is for communication software to be able to reach out to each one of the five counties and also the cities that are within those counties. And Pete's here, if you have any questions about that or would like him to give you more information about that.
Pete, is that some sort of web-based?
It is. It's a web-based incident management system called WebEOC. The state uses that system, so does FEMA, so do some of our adjoining states. In 2010, for example, as we were sharing information on that system with the state, communities downstream were watching what was happening in Washington County so it helped them ramp up and prepare. FEMA Region 8 was watching it so that they could get their teams ready to come in once we reached a disaster level. It will allow us to interface all five counties seamlessly to list our resources and have those mapped out so that in an emergency, we can look at the closest resource to come in from different areas within the region. In addition to that, it has an incident action planning software that goes in there that allows us to set up incident action plans through the event in the emergency operation center.
Is the $66,000 covered for three years, or is that one year?
That's one year. It's one year, three years. It's paid for with us HSP grant funding. The first two years of, we've already been told, are funded, so the third year would be funded once that grant becomes available.
Thank you, Pete. So, the total there is $66,650. The last ones that we have are all for the road department, and this is for asphalt, for different roads in the county. The first one that they've brought forth is those areas that are being asphalted is Turkey Farm and Chivowitz and Brookside, Baker Dam Central and Pine Valley. And that one is for $66,456.42. The next one that they've submitted is for, again, for the same thing, for Bench Road, Bentley Lane and West Enterprise. And then the third one for them is for, is all for West Enterprise, and that is, well, that second one, the total there is $69,878.18. And then the next one is for West Enterprise, and that one is for $83,751.78. And the last one is for West Enterprise also, and it is for $33,013.92.
For Western Emulsions?
Yes.
Those were all budgeted?
Yes, they have enough money in their budget to cover it, yes.
I have one question wrong, or is West Enterprise all in the county, is that one? Or did we do some work for enterprises?
City of Enterprises had an extra portion of it. We started outside of their bounds and just did the county portion.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, so that's the ones we have for today, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the purchase request as presented by our deputy purchasing agent, Mark Blanch.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. At this point in the agenda, I'd like to accept a motion to moderate the agenda, to make, modify the agenda to move item 11 up onto the agenda, if that's okay.
To where at?
So, we will take care of item 11 right now and then proceed with the agenda.
I'd make that motion.
Oh, I can second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. So, item 11 that has now become item two is consideration of resolution R-2017-2240, a resolution in favor of expanding the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve to include the area northwest of Bloomington and approving a modified Washington Parkway route to create net positive results for the threatened desert tortoise. Cameron, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, about a year and a half ago, the HCP permit expired, and since then, we've been in negotiations to renew our permit. And one of the complicating issues that we've had, well, there's several, but most of the complicated issues involved the possibility of alternative mitigation. And if there's any out there, what does that look like? And so, Washington County took on the initiative that we need to determine what kind of mitigation potential is out there to help solve some of these different issues that we've got. And we've had a lot of different reports of tortoises occurring west of St. George in the Bloomington area, Green Valley Gap area. And so, Washington County hired a few tortoise biologists and our own staff as well, and we went out there to begin surveying some of these areas to look for desert tortoise and the desert tortoise habitat. This is the area that we went out to. Everywhere in that crosshatched areas, it's about 3,000 acres of sitla land and about just over 2,000 acres of BLM land. We wanted to go into the Red Bluff AC/EC to cover more area close to the sitla properties, but there's some sensitive plants and soils and the BLM didn't authorize us to go in there. But we took a different approach to kind of look for tortoises out there that I'll explain in just a minute. This is a more zoomed-in version of where we went to. Those are the actual transects that we walked. There's 230 lines there, separated by 16 meters each, and we walked a total of 342 kilometers.
So, long.
And we found a lot of tortoises. We knew we'd find a few, but we found way more tortoises than what we were expecting. We found large adults, we found medium-sized little ones and baby hatchlings as well. In total, we found 78 desert tortoises. 56 of those were live adult animals, 22 were juvenile tortoises. On the right-hand side here, you can see geographically where those animals occurred on the landscape, and then on this other side, that's where all the other sign was, burrows, scat, tracks. So, those aren't live animals, but that represents where there was a lot of tortoise activity. And again, this is just to remind you, we wanted to get into that AC/EC, but due to those constraints, we couldn't get in there. So, what we did instead, they only allow people on the authorized trails. And so, we put signs up at all the major trailheads on the AC/EC and the adjacent sitla lands, and we asked our citizens who were using those trails to submit their tortoise observations back to us. And this was also highly successful. They almost immediately started reporting their tortoise observations. As you can see, there's, you know, them with their bikes and their helmets, and most of the observers seem to be on mountain bikes, but there are other people who were just hiking or even driving by some of these areas as well. They found 49 adult desert tortoises and approximately 17 juvenile tortoises. It's kind of hard to tell from a picture if it was an adult or juvenile, but that's our best estimate. A total of 66 tortoises and about nearly 30% of those were juveniles. So, this shows you the results of where those tortoises occurred. And as you can see, it was west of our survey area on the Red Bluff AC/EC, and then much further north, all throughout the Santa Clara River Reserve, there was a lot of tortoise activity up there as well. So, well beyond our survey area, there still is a lot of tortoise sign and live tortoises. This gives you a better idea of how large the whole geographic area is for tortoises. This includes all of our survey results, the citizen science data, and then also observations from the past from Division of Wildlife, from BLM and Fish and Wildlife Service. And it gives you an idea of the, it's called a minimum convex polygon, what's kind of the minimum occupied tortoise habitat on that landscape. And we just kind of connected the outermost dots to show where tortoises occur, and it's nearly 38,000 acres. One of the reasons why this area might be an important place to protect is its location relative to the recovery units of the desert tortoise. The Red Cliffs Desert Reserve is located in the Upper Virgin River Recovery Unit. The next one to the west is the Northeastern Mojave Recovery Unit. And as it is right now, the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve is a little bit isolated from the next recovery unit. It's kind of an island population in a way. Our survey area is much closer to the Mojave, the Northeastern Mojave Recovery Unit. And then, just to the southwest there, you have habitat that links the two recovery units. And these areas are already pretty well protected because there's a BLM wilderness area and AC/EC. So, it's a good thing that that's already protected for tortoise conservation, but the survey area, much of that is not, at least the sitla portions certainly are not. The AC/EC parts are a little bit more protected, but the sitla lands are fully developable. One of the other neat things that we found on our survey was just a variety of other species. The dwarf bear poppy up there in the corner is a federally listed plant species, and it was very abundant even on the sitla properties that we surveyed. Holmgren milkwedge was another plant that we found that's a listed plant. And then these other animals are state-sensitive species that we found, gila monsters, chuckwallas, kit fox. And so, protection of this area wouldn't just benefit the desert tortoise, but it would benefit other listed and state-sensitive species. So, just to kind of cap everything and summarize it, we surveyed over 5,000 acres, 3,000 acres of which were the sitla properties. We found 78 tortoises on those surveys and lots of tortoise sign throughout all of the survey area. If you look at the abundance estimate from just that survey area, it was 468 desert tortoises. And that's just over the 5,000 acres. If you extrapolate that over 20,000 or 30,000 acres, you're looking at a population of tortoises well over 1,000 animals. Our density estimate was 22 and a half tortoises per square kilometer, which is extremely high. That's probably one of the highest-known populations anywhere. The reserve itself is 15.3, which is significantly higher than any of the other recovery units. And so, this portion of our recovery unit is actually even higher than the reserve. So, it seems to be very outstanding habitat for desert tortoise. Another key observation was that 30% of our observations were juvenile tortoises, and that is much higher than the normal encounter. Normally, when they're doing surveys in the rest of the Mojave Desert, only about 12% of their observations are juveniles. So, this seems to be a young and growing reproductive population, which is really neat. And we only found four dead tortoises. So, four dead tortoises compared to 78 live tortoises also shows that there's really high survivorship. Typically, you'll see anywhere from 30 to 40% of dead animals, where ours is much lower than that as well. The other key take-home is that the citizen science was a great project, not only to get the data from the citizens themselves, but it helps them take a little bit of ownership of those areas of their public lands that they can enjoy, appreciate, and learn a little bit more about. But their data clearly showed that tortoise distribution continues far north of our survey area and far west as well. And then also, this area might be a really important link between our two recovery units. And then finally, it's a great resource to protect other animals, not just the desert tortoise. So, that's all I've got for you.
So, can I ask a question?
I was just going to just thank everybody. There was a lot of people who helped, but that's all, yeah.
So, when I talked to Bob Sandberg, this is a former biologist, he, I says, why would this area have so much young tortoises, like what's going on here? And he represented, he says, well, one of the great threats to the young tortoises is coyotes, pros, that type of thing, and human activity will generally chase those predators away. Did the other biologists that were out here looking at that, like was there signs of coyotes out there, or?
There certainly was ravens. I remember seeing lots of ravens. You see those throughout the whole county, though. The kit foxes, I showed you those. I don't, I'm sure somebody had to have seen coyotes. They're out there. But again, we have a bounty on coyotes. Compared to a lot of these other places in California and Nevada, their coyote populations are much higher than ours. And so, that probably comes into play as part of it. The other thing is that Utah is just blessed with a little bit more rainfall than the Mojave Desert and a little bit better terrain and habitat compared to those areas. And so, I think tortoises just naturally thrive here a little bit better. So, it's a combination of those things.
I think one of the things that's very interesting about this study is that this is an intensely recreated area. I mean, you have a tremendous amount of mountain biking and just recreation out there. It's very close to human, you know, where people live. And so, it shows that we can live and use and recreate the same area, which hasn't always been accepted as far as the tortoise recovery.
That's very true. And I, if I go back and show you on our map of where these tortoises occurred, it was kind of curious that some of the most heavily recreated areas is where we actually found some of the most dense populations of desert tortoises. And we don't know exactly why that is. I've got some speculative theories, but that area up in kind of the north central region is right by the Green Valley Gap trailhead. There's a lot of tortoise activity up in there. And then this other area down here in the corner, and even going back to the citizen science, it shows you on the trails right there, that's the Navajo Drive, that's the Bearclaw Poppy Trail, and there's just a ton of tortoise activity in that area as well. One of the recreationists even said that he had seen seven tortoises on one bike ride on that trail. So, there's a lot of tortoise activity in some of those areas. And how all of them got here in the first place, you know, it's always been debatable, but we know that some of these were potentially released at some of these locations just because it seems like that would be the most convenient place to drop off a tortoise, and perhaps that's why you have tortoises at a higher abundance there. We don't know for sure if that's the answer, but even one of the tortoises that one of the citizens sent us the photo of, it had a hole drilled in its shell. It was somebody's former pet once upon a time. So, we know it happens, we just, it's hard to keep track of.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Let's see, are we going to have Aaron Baker speak to the route alignment and discussion on that with Horex Engineering?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Yes, I'm Aaron Baker from Horex Engineers. Get this started here. I was asked by our Dixie Metropolitan Planning Organization to help them to come up with some, I guess, just some validity of some of the sketches that we have of a possible location of a northern corridor in the northern area of, in the reserve. And that's, and this is essentially just a quick summation of what we did, and these lines just represent some of the lines that we've sketched out on maps that could possibly happen in this area to try to obtain a connection from Washington Parkway in Washington, just above, at the top of Green Springs, to connect over to Red Hills Parkway, which is a very well-traveled road that is, that's also in the reserve, but a location there to connect. So, these are, these are just lines just showing some of the areas that we've considered, considered looking at. And this is an example of the type of road that we're looking at. It's a, it is a corridor, it's not, it's not just a road. It's a multifaceted purpose in this corridor. It's a utility corridor. It's a multimodal. So, what we're looking at here is, it's two directions of traffic, so that's kind of the darker stripes with the lines down the middle. There's median in the middle, and then on the left side, or I'm sorry, on the right side is a trail that would be for pedestrians and bicyclists. And this is very similar to what we have on Red Hills Parkway. So, this, it's a kind of an ultimate width. One day we'll, looking at the volume of traffic that will be on this road, this is ultimately what it would look like. So, on every one of those lines, we considered a cross-section or a roadway size similar to this one. We have an original line that we've had on our maps for years that has kind of shown one of the connections, and it goes through kind of the heart of some areas of the reserve. This was one of the options that we looked at. Another one that has, that has come up, that it's called, what we call the blue line, we just labeled it a blue color. But this is the furthest southern line in this area, and it's kind of closest to the urbanized area of St. George. And this is a biological-approved, but engineering-wise, it can work. It's one that we've taken a look at, doesn't have any fatal flaws, it's not too steep. It is rather steep in areas, but it can, it can work through this, through this reserve. And so, this is really the recommendation that we have at this time that is part of the resolution and is attached to the map in the resolution. That's essentially the one that we wanted to look at, and if you had any questions on how we arrived at that, or?
No, I just, I have a question, Aaron. About how many acres would this new route take if we build it at a projected right-of-way width that you're anticipating?
And your question is how many acres south of the road, or what the road is actually taking?
No, south of the roadway itself.
I, I'm just trying to recall on memory. I think it's like 180 acres, something like that. It's a 300-foot wide footprint for 4.5 miles. And I think this one is actually a little longer. I think this is 4.6 miles. But that's, that's the area.
And the reason the biologist wanted the line moved south was?
They were, their hope is to try to have as large a contiguous area that they could to kind of preserve their habitat space, so it wouldn't be bisecting that area. And so, this farther south just kind of takes strips of the reserve, out of the reserve instead of, you know, essentially bisecting, you know, a populated area for tortoises.
So, are you finished?
I just got to make a comment. I think this is one of the most intriguing proposals that we've had a chance to visit on for many, many years where, working with a lot of different stakeholders, including Fish and Wildlife and the Department of Natural Resources, the BLM at a state and local level, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, UDOT, and really looking at how we could come up with a win for everyone. And especially sitla has been a valuable entity that owns so much land that has the potential of being developed that would work with the county and the other stakeholders to protect that land for the benefit of the tortoise, bringing potentially thousands and thousands of additional acres into the reserve. And simultaneously, I see this as being very congruent with what we've wanted to do with Vision Dixie, where we preserve our signature scenic landscapes and view sheds, as well as simultaneously enhance and protect the opportunity to walk and recreate. And with the northern corridor, you've got an impact of somewhat less than 200 acres, but being able to bring thousands of acres of mitigation in and a long-term commitment from the county of at least 20 years for the life of the HCP to do that. I see this as really a potential win-win. And so, I speak in favor of the resolution. I think it is the most responsible alternative that we've really had a chance to look at in terms of mitigating adverse impacts for the tortoise. And with the Gardner Institute's recently released population studies that show Washington County with a burgeoning population by the year 2040, that if we can't establish a good viable east-west route, then we're apt to suffer from gridlock on the Boulevard, 700 South and 100 South, where we're so limited because of geography with black ridges on each side of the valley and Virgin River and everything working against an efficient transportation network. I think this keeps our commute times more reasonable, and that will cut down on air pollution and just go a lot to keep our quality of life here in Washington County for both the tortoise and the other species that live on all of this land that we would be willing to protect.
So, Aaron, just a couple of questions. Towards the left side, the road looks like it kind of makes a, heads to the north really quick right there. Is there a reason why shot to the north and not just make a straight line into the, right? So, there's the existing parking lot. Yeah, so, yeah, why can't we just go straight?
Just go straight here? There is a pedestrian crossing that's really close that we were respecting at the time. That could definitely be altered and changed when you're talking about a project of this scope, but that's effectively why we did that.
And then, so, where's Cameron? So, I know on the other road, Red Hills, there's some tunnels or, I don't, some culverts So, I know on the other road, Red Hills, there are some tunnels or, I don't, some culverts for tortoises. And I know you and I have talked about it, and you said those have worked. What else can we do, let's say, on this road to help mitigate those tortoises kind of going back and forth?
Well, to a certain extent, they've certainly worked. We don't know the full story yet, but tortoises are definitely going in there a lot. But they seem to use them more as shelters, but they do occasionally cross. Um, in order to keep genetic flow, you only need a few animals over five to ten-year span to, to be passing their genes to keep the, the population strong and healthy. So, in the long term, I think they're going to be effective. What will be even more effective with, with this road, as I've heard it engineered, there's, there's two sections that are going to be on stilts as it crosses that black ridge on each side. So, that would allow, certainly allow for passage of desert tortoises much easier than a covert. It's just gonna, I mean, people could walk under it. So, um, there should be far less problems with that in terms of cutting off the habitat and fragmentation.
And then, I, I don't know which one. Is this one look, this route, I know there's the old landfill right there. It seems like this route avoids that. Is that correct?
Um, it's, it's immediately adjacent to it.
Okay.
Yeah, the landfill, if I can get this to work, is like right in this area.
Okay. Perfect.
Well, yeah, I think we have a motion and probably a second. I'd just speak to this really quickly. I think, uh, you know, great work has been going into this. Commissioner Cox has been leading out on this. Of course, this has been a multi-decade conversation as Mother Nature has created very interesting topography. The very topography that we love is also, is quite difficult for engineers to route roads and traffic around. And I think we're trying to, to meet in the middle here, not only with identifying mitigation acreage. And I will say this, and I believe the two thousand and nine Landesville promised us the northern corridor. And, and I feel bad that we have to fight so hard for it now when Congress and the President signed for it before. And so, I'll just put that on the record. I also will say on the record that I'll accept whatever option we can compromise for. But I hope that the biologist will work with the landscape opposed to just wanting to work with the map and get us the most southerly route. That being said, the southerly route does identify already that, um, we're going to have the highest traffic. Uh, so, most bang for our buck on traffic flows, right?
On the, on the west side of Turkey Farm Road, you will have some of the higher volumes. On the east side, not as high, but on the west it will definitely.
Well, did we have an official motion, or?
Yeah, I would make that motion in support.
So, would you mind if I make a friendly?
Yeah.
Request is, right after the whereas that talks about the Sitla Trust land, if we could add the paragraph, whereas the recreational, um, the rec, the recreation that is currently occurring on the Utah Sitla and Institute Trust Land Administration also be protected if the land is transferred to the Habitat Conservation Area. I just, that area is used by a lot of people, and I just want...
Is that on paragraph five?
So, it'd be one, two, three, four. So, it'd be, yeah, insert paragraph four.
I, I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion with amendment that's been entered into the record. Do we have a second? Oh, we have a second?
If you can read my notes. A second, sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item passes. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
You're very welcome.
I'd like to also recognize, uh, Dave Demas and Myron Lee, uh, from our Metropolitan Planning Organization, and recognize their countless hours of effort as we've worked on this project over the past several months. They've, they've really stepped up and, and worked hard to help answer questions and work with the county on this, uh, proposition.
Absolutely. I think throughout this conversation on the northern corridor, the county commission has made it abundantly clear that it's our intent to have a transportation route that honors the landscape it goes through, that, that totally is a, is a net win for the tortoise. And I, I think that all of our actions would be deemed, uh, or would demonstrate that. So, anyway, we'll appreciate that. Appreciate everybody's participation. We'll move on with our regular agenda, which is consideration of the George Fest, uh, sponsorship. And I'll turn the time over to Dean.
I'd, I'd like to speak to that, uh, Commissioners. In our last meeting, when, uh, we considered several proposals, a question came up at the time that I had on the George Fest, and it was whether or not they were tax exempt. And because it was stated that their application stated that they were. And as I went home that evening and had a chance to reflect on it a little bit, I, I, I wasn't sure if that was exactly accurate, and, and it was a bit confusing. In fact, maybe, uh, we can get Eric to speak to a little bit of his findings on that. But I asked that we, uh, hold off payment of that, or delivering the payment of that until we had a chance to discuss it openly in a, in a forum to make sure that we're making, uh, an absolutely correct decision. When the application stated they were a 501(c)(3), uh, I wondered about that because, uh, having recently gone through an, an election experience, uh, I was the, uh, involved with one of the other candidates that they editorialized in support of. And I just didn't know if it was consistent for a 501(c)(3) to be involved in, uh, that type of activity. Now, my research since then has shows that, uh, they've attempted to make a change in that 501(c)(3). And, and maybe with Melinda Thorpe here, she could speak to that and, uh, let us know what that status is and whether those concerns that I have have been adequately addressed.
Very good, very good. I'll, um, allow Linda to speak to this if she would like, uh, once she comes up. I, I will say that we have this item and several others as far as the funding for, for different tourism-related items. And, and we, as the county commissioner, are trying to, um, there's a little bit of, there's been a little bit of confusion on our part where our staff has not fully understood or explained the process to the applicants that, that the allocation of funds reside in the legislative body of the county commission. And so, any sort of promise or commitment for funds has to come before this body. And we also need it to come before it in a, in a more, with enough time in order for this to be considered in case there are items that need to be considered. Because in my, I think we have several items that, I mean, it's almost, you know, the cow's left the barn, so to speak. And so, um, but anyway, um, George Fest is a, is a, is a well-known brand. I think we're on the third year. Of course, with this, and I'll just say my one editorial, and then, then this way you can respond. I mean, anytime a private organization uses public space and public funds to generate private profits, there has to be a certain amount of, uh, uh, public benefit that follows that. And that has to, to, to weigh in to, to how and why. And I, and I think your, your argument as far as, I mean, I support overall the, the concept of, of what you've done or what you attempt to do. But, but there is this extra scrutiny that, that is much different than another business. So...
Well, just to speak to that, that is, um, certainly part of the reason we decided to transition from a private entity running, um, the event to a nonprofit organization. Essentially, the private entity was necessary to launch an event like this. Um, we appreciate the partnership we've had with St. George City. But it became evident that for the, the event to continue long-term, it needed to have, um, a nonprofit infrastructure. So, I'm not, I'm not aware of an editorializing. Um, I would be offended if it were construed in any way that George Fest had supported any particular candidate. We do provide products, so we have a playbill much like the Shakespeare Festival or Tuaccon that anyone can purchase an advertisement in. And I know, um, that neither one of those playbills, um, require any kind of restriction. Anyone can, any political candidate can pay for an ad in those publications, just like in George Fest. We also sell booth space, um, and I have always required that any political candidate pay full price for the booth space. So, there is no, um, show of favoritism. I am savvy in my career enough to know that we do not show favoritism to political candidates. Should they be involved in an, an event like this? Absolutely. They're part of the community. One thing that we ran into is political candidates wanted to hand out flyers at the event and requiring them to purchase a booth space if they wanted to participate was a way for us to control, um, them in their advocating for themselves. So, those are the two ties that I am aware of, um, in terms of any relationship to politi, political activities whatsoever. Further questions?
Well, I, I guess my, what I'd add to that, so you're saying that any sort of, um, anything would have been purchased? Like, if, if, if it appeared, it would have been purchased. I guess I would, I would just caution, you know, I know, for example, there are some festivals. I, I, I know, for example, in the county fair, there was a particular candidate that wanted to have her endorsement on the T-shirt. And, you know, we said, no, not on the T-shirt. You can have the booth, you know, you can do that, but we're not, we're not going to put, put it on the T-shirt. And, um, we get back to this, you are kind of this public, almost community event. A lot of people probably don't even know that George Fest is not St. George City. And so, um, I'd be willing to, to support the sponsorship if you give me kind of the commitment that you'll make effort to, to, to have within, just practice common sense. I mean, I wouldn't want this to cut anyway. Other words, us, we're all candidates here in a few years, and we wouldn't want it to appear that there was favoritism based on a vote of sponsorship either. So, you can kind of appreciate that.
Absolutely appreciate that and appreciate the, um, learning process. This has been, we've always been conscientious of candidate involvement and tried to be very careful about how we handled that. But I can't speak to the future. I have actually, um, stepped away from the event, um, to go back to my career, although running an event is a lot of fun. Um, I'm trying to be a, a responsible adult. John Kessler, however, he is trying to be a responsible adult, but he has taken over as board president. So, speaking to the future, he probably is the one that should make the commitment on the behalf of the event.
Well, speaking to the future, I won't be able to support it if I feel like there's unfair or if there's political participation. So, it's kind of, but I, I totally acknowledge.
I just, I, just my position, I don't feel like I'm the person that can say that.
So, I, I was the one that the commission meeting represented that you were a nonprofit. And that was clearly based upon your application. I guess my big concern is, is you're not. And, and I know you emailed this, kind of this thing saying, well, we're kind of trying to fall underneath this other one that's a 501(c)(3) organization. And I, I think we're reaching out there too far. And my concern is, is, is that you came to us, made a representation, and I accepted that. And now, the explanation I thought was very, wasn't correct. So, you're saying, well, we didn't understand and stuff. And then adds another concern is like, well, what kind of organization are we giving money to that can't even tell us what organization they are? And so, I, I mean, I, I know we have the political thing, but that brings up this whole other, other argument that we need to be careful about is you're not a nonprofit, and maybe you are, it's under this weird thing, but if you don't...
If you don't have a letter from the IRS saying that you're a nonprofit, uh, Arts might be.
And, and that's fine, because we do give money to for-profit organizations sometimes. But the representation that you were, to me, when I see it's a nonprofit, I, I, I know that the IRS has certain requirements kicked in. So, I, I probably would have asked a lot of the questions. And so, that's, that's my concern. And then you, then I get this email saying, oh, we kind of are, because we're, we're going to try to get under somebody else's 501(c)(3).
We followed after Arts to Zion, the organization. Um, there are several other organizations. Again, I think John Kessler can probably speak and maybe should be speaking in this place, addressing your questions. Um, but I do know that there are several organizations in the community that receive, um, community funding that are set up under Arts Inc. I know that we have our own tax ID number as a DBA. Um, so, you are speaking to, um, language, as I understand what you're saying, that seems abstract or, um, misleading, perhaps you've, you've said. I don't think I can speak to that. I think that, um, John Kessler needs to speak to that. But I will state...
Bring him up.
I will state that I do know that we have the tax ID numbers. Um, the paperwork was submitted. And I think Eric Clark and I have been emailing back and forth, and perhaps he has some insight.
Okay, if you're familiar with the, uh, the Fiore Center, the best way I can explain that is it's an incubation center for nonprofits. We've had groups like the St. George Opera, St. George Dance, um, and there's several others right now that are under that umbrella, basically. But, um, they can, i- in our situation, it's running as a DBA underneath the umbrella of the Fiore Center or Arts, which is nonprofit and has been since the first of the year, I believe. And, um, and there are several, I know on the city level, when grants are going through with, uh, the St. George Arts Commission, there's probably, I think this, this last year, we had at least five organizations that were granted money, and they are recognized, and it was RAP tax money, and they are recognized as nonprofit because it does go through the Fiore Center or Arts. So, it, it is.
Commissioner, a comment that I'll make on that is when we passed our RAP ordinance, uh, it specifies that they have to be a nonprofit. With that first funding cycle, the county commission knowingly made an exception and allowed, uh, MC Square, uh, to represent some of these smaller not-for-profit type of things.
Not MC Square, but, um...
As, as a bridge solution to allow them to get funding while they secured their own 501(c)(3) status. We're hesitant to really take that too far because they actually take a commission out of all of the RAP proceeds that were awarded. And I think it was either eight or 10 percent. And so, is there similarly a fifteen hundred dollar, uh, payment that would go to them for your use of that 501(c)(3) umbrella?
Yeah, so there is. The, uh, and it's quite frankly very appropriate in this situation because the Fiore Center or the Arts, um, they do all of the bookkeeping for us. So, all of the checks, the fiduciary matters do go through a third party, if you will, where all the funding goes in and they pay all the checks out. And, uh, so, even for that service alone, it's very valuable while the organization continues to, uh, continue to try, try to exist and grow.
Are you at any time going to try to secure your own 501(c)(3)?
Oh, that's the plan. That's the plan. And like, it's like I said, it's an incubation. It's not a permanent solution, not for this event, to stay at the center.
I know each commissioner kind of has their own concerns on any issue. You know, with this one particular issue, you know, like I, I started out, I, I think part of the challenge is that, that we as, as a county are going to be updating our own application process, making sure it's more thorough. I kind of feel like, you know, if, if we wouldn't have dropped the ball so much on our end, we, we would have got some of these issues resolved first. There's also with the RAP, I mean, I think it is wholly appropriate that people that apply for the RAP get their 501(c), you know, because they're very much an arts, um, program. And you guys are right there bordering on, you don't know if you're arts or tourism, or, you know, you're right there. And I appreciate that you're kind of in, in kind of no man's land. But at the same time, we do have other promoters who are for-profit, you know, who are applying for and receiving marketing funds. But, but I think it was the whole confusion over, over the application that kind of, you know, sparked our interest, started, you know, and I think we're going to need to address that probably as a county.
Sorry, Commissioner, if I can just insert, you, you may just want to double-check your paperwork because with, with what I was looking at on the Utah Business End website, you're still not showing the creating documents as coming from, from your new 501(c)(3) entity, but they're still showing it's coming through MC Square. And so, that, that's part of the stuff that...
Okay.
That I just flagged as it...
Yeah, we can get that.
And that, that could be that the state hasn't updated stuff, but that's what it's showing online still.
Yeah, I can get that for you.
One last question I've got. Uh, I'm showing that fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars has already been spent. Was that spent before or after we initiated these discussions two weeks ago? And would these funds then be supplanting, uh, money you've already spent? Or are you going to go out and spend additional money if we make this award?
That, well, there's the budget waiting to follow. So, as, as you, the majority of it would have been spent for things that have been committed to and used up, and you try to apportion it all out. So, some, some expenses are larger expenses the first, and then they pitter off. So, it's, it's hard to give an exact...
I believe we operate off a reimbursement type of process, so...
But I normally would prefer that the reimbursement be after the funds have been allocated and that they don't spend the money before it's been legislatively allocated.
Which I think is what my main complaint is, not necessarily with you, but with our own department.
Our process.
And that, that's going to be something that's going to have to be remedied on our side, so...
I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, and, uh, I would like to see some follow-up at some time that shows that they are making progress on the 501(c)(3), because in, in, in my heart of hearts, if we're giving money out to for-profit entities, the county does that all the time. We'll go buy a set of tires, we'll buy oil, we'll buy gas, and they're all in business to make money. But state law requires that when we give money to for-profit entities, we contractually show what we're getting back in return for it. And, uh, I think there's an implication, if not an outright requirement, that the county exchange fair value for fair value. Uh, a 501(c)(3) does not have that stipulation placed upon it. And so, again, our concern was really, uh, what is the true status of the organization? And, uh, I think we'll contractually show with this approval that advertising is placed in the markets outside of St. George that will bring and draw visitors into Washington County. But, uh, frankly, if I see another application that misrepresents the status of the organization, I won't support it. So, that would be my motion in support of.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second?
I just have a, a question on it. So, I'm very confused, in the sense that you're saying that you're a DBA, but you have your own tax ID number. That does not make sense. Because when you go to the IRS, you're going to the IRS saying, "We either are this company over here or this company over here." And so, you're kind of telling the IRS that, "No, we haven't up," like it's-
Well, MC, MC Square has a rela-, well, I'm not gonna try to explain.
So- What are you?
But as I understand it, we're a DBA underneath the Arts Organization.
So, how do you have your own tax ID number?
I've been in this for two months. I'm catching up. I'm catching up.
That's right. And me, and, and these are, these are hard questions. I agree, and stuff like that, so.
So, yeah, I-
It's Arts Inc.
That would make, well, as, if we're a DBA under Arts Inc., then it's the Arts Inc.'s number that we've been using.
So, if that's how you file your tax return?
But they have their own separate tax ID number, that they'd have to file a separate tax ID, or, excuse me, tax return every year as a for-profit.
Yeah, I have a meeting with them later this week. I'll be asking that. I'll figure that out, so.
Could you, could you, after that meeting, come and just visit?
Sure, yeah.
With us and Eric?
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll second the motion unless, you wanna second it? I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Nay. I, I don't know what they are yet. And, and just so you know, I, I want you to tell you, I, I've been to George Fest, and I think it's a great organization. I, I, I'd vote to keep it if I knew what you guys were.
Understood.
Because I think what you're, I think it's a good organization. I, I fought for you guys in the other tourism board that we had, because I think it's a great event. But I think before we're doing that, I just would like to know, and if you came back to me and says, "This is what we are," even if you came back and said, "We're for-profit," I, I'd understand it.
So, at least we know what we're voting on and-
Understood. Understood. Okay.
So, don't take it personal why I'm voting that way.
We're good. We're good.
All right.
I really do hope-
I'll be in touch.
You continue to, to build success. I mean, you know, but we need to have answers to these questions.
All right. We'll be in touch.
And I know I've taught, I, just individually and stuff, we're gonna try to improve our application to make sure this is cleared up. So, we're, I want you to know, on our side, we're trying to clear it up too. So, I want to apologize for the confusion for the county side of this, so we wouldn't have got-
Well, we're only two years into it, so it's, it's, it's okay. It's fine. It's understandable.
Good. Thank you. Yes, uh, just to echo Commissioner Renshams, I, I'd give ourselves about fifty-one percent of the blame on this confusion, so. Thanks.
You bet.
Maybe I'll up that to sixty-five percent. Very good. We're gonna have a presentation on the county fair. Wendy Sandberg, hey, you're hiding there, Wendy. How's it going?
Oops. Okay. We had a great county fair this year. This doesn't work, right? I just need to talk loud? Okay. How do I go up? How do I get out? It's not going. I, it, my, the mouse won't go over there. It's right. What the heck's the mouse?
Touchpads, quick work when you might have to re-bid it, so. Get your mouse to work.
Well, I know you've got a long agenda, and I was gonna rush through this, and now I've just prolonged it. Well, I don't know what I did.
Hey, there's your county fair's very important, so.
Hey, what?
County fair's very important. We need a proper presentation.
We had a great time, and as we all know, and I was gonna show you, we had two designs this year. One was, um, based off of the Wizard of Oz, lions, tigers, and bears. Oh my, because we could get all those shows. Second of all, there's no place like home, because this was our twentieth anniversary at being at the fairgrounds since nineteen ninety-seven. So, we just kind of incorporated everything and made it the Wizard of Oz theme, which was awesome. And-
That lightning stormy order was just amazing.
I did not.
It's better than fireworks.
It was, it was something else.
And maybe I can go over that, and I go, "Pete, where are you, Pete?" When, when I get a phone call from the fire marshal and say, "What do you want to do? We've gotta close this thing down. Lightning's a quarter a mile away." And I was, I was not prepared to know, but we had that good Grafton building, and we just evacuated up there, just say, "Have all the people," was that the right thing to do, Pete? Go run and got those doors open. Everybody went into the food court. We have the three buildings that everybody evacuated to, which saved our lives. It was-
The one challenge is it turned the demolition derby into the mud box, so.
Oh, and I've got great pictures of that, darn it. And we still had our derby. It was an hour and a half late in the mud, but we were still able to award all the prize money. We couldn't, w- I was afraid that everybody would want refunds off the money, and I was not prepared to do that. And our internet sales said, "No refunds," and we had a lot of mad people. But when you can say the show took place, then that covered, covered us really good. Well, shall I go? Yeah, it's just taking its sweet time. Aw. I don't know why the mouse stopped working. Any questions?
How many visitors did you, um, do you estimate this year? We had about forty-something thousand last year?
Yeah, it's usually about the same. We had a loss on Saturday night, of course. Um, nobody was coming into park, so we lost parking revenue. The carnival shut down, so we lost carnival revenue that night. Um, the boxing was totally underwater. All of our cords for a- all the lights and, um, PA system was underwater, so we didn't dare turn that on. So, so counting the cars, that's all we have to go on, since we don't charge an admission price. We just have to c- count the cars that pay, plus all the passes that we all give away, so it's around the forty thousand. I think last year was higher with forty-three thousand people coming. And this was gonna be a record year, 'cause it started off good.
That was a great lightning show on Tiger Storm that you put on, though.
Yeah.
This might be a while.
Well, let's just forget it, or what do you want to do? Just table it for the listeners?
Why don't you just tell us about it, if, uh, maybe you are finished with it, but I, my feedback on it is, I thought you did a great job. I, uh-
It was great.
You came to visit me. Thank you.
Enjoyed, uh, seeing all of the participation in, in terms of volunteers and staff, fair board that you had out at the venues, and a very well-run show.
It was. It was good. And thanks to the support of the commission and the county for helping us with that fair. It's, it's really important to all of us, I think, and- well. Uh, just in town. I just want you to see the, the cars in the mud, and then we'll go. It says right here, it says up and down right here. Twenty years, we put these logos in seed displays. Tocqueville went to state to represent Washington County then, up there at the state fair. Um, ribbon cutting, Lyman Hayton was our grand marshal. This is a cool shot of coming into the fair. Lots of different things you can see there, flags, no cones, going up the stairs to the Grafton Building. This is a beautiful building, and we are so lucky to have it, and I can't wait to utilize it for next year. Um, had the midget wrestling in there for, um, the opening show. Uh, it wasn't as attended as I thought it was going to be. I was worried about seating, but didn't need to be after all. We sat about, I had chairs, well, seating for eight hundred and sixty people, five hundred came. It, it was a good show.
I still don't know how I feel about that.
Yeah. I, I didn't know how I felt when I was cheering for-
Another country?
Yeah.
Or what? It was weird, but it all came, didn't it? The bear show, very educational. He didn't do as much as he want, as I wanted him to, 'cause he broke his arm. Tigers, top compliment of the whole fair. They were very impressive. Lots of education. Each one of them eats a hundred pounds of meat a day. Big crowds. Um, wood carver. All he wanted in payment was an electric saw. So, we went to Colorland, Commissioner Cox, and bought him an electric saw, and he carved away, and he sold most of his stuff.
He did a good job, but it's fun watching.
It was really fun. Um, we invested in a money cube. We called it the Kansas Tornado Money Cube. Um, this is our first time doing it. We didn't know how much money to allocate, but it stretched just fine. Everybody was excited to get in there and grab a little cash. Um, the most anybody got at one time in twenty seconds was forty-two dollars.
Wow, yeah.
Almost like you, Commissioner Iverson. He got fifteen. We tried it out with Commissioner Iverson. He got fifteen dollars. Had a great, um, Arthur Fratelli, great magician, that came from Omaha. He did sidewalk strolling too. Our train's great. Everybody loves to get on the crane. Um, this is a counting contest we have. This is a coloring contest we have. We got, um, cell phone charging tables that everybody was using. Um, our animal education center, we need more animals. We, we've got to get on, and s- maybe people just don't raise animals very much anymore, but that's something we need to work on. Four H Horse Show, beautiful quilts and exhibits from all the members of our county. Fair food. Who's the best Wizard of Oz character? Um, the lion, courageous lion won. Photo booth, all the pictures were free to the public. He took over four thousand picture strips. Boxing great Friday night, rained out Saturday night. We had an outdoor movie planned, but the wind would not us let, would not let us erect the movie screen, so we showed it on the Grafton gr- garage door. Had a Yellow Brick Road Fun Run in Hurricane. Here's our parade, our grand marshal Lyman and Debbie Hayton. Pioneer Award, Jewel and Shelby Frye. There's the commissioners. How'd you get that Humvee? How'd you get that army thing?
Cory's.
Cory's.
He drives.
Beautiful floats, and that sh- see, I didn't look up during the fair, but that was at nine fifteen in the morning, and all those clouds were coming in, and I didn't look up. Cities were very supportive, had beautiful floats and their royalties, that's Hurricane. Baby contest. And then at one thirty, it started to rain, and I said, "That's fine. Let it come. We don't care, as long as it's good during Derby. Let it come." And I just sat there and enjoyed it. We got everybody in. It takes one hour to get four thousand people into that arena, and we finally got everyone in, and we had all the ca- cars out there, so people could do their meet and greet, go talk to the drivers, inspect the cars. We got everybody seated, and then the rain came, and then the fire marshal called and said, "Get to the buildings, and what do you want to do?" So, we evacuated to the buildings. So, they went in and did this hypnotist. The hypnotist said it was the biggest crowd that he's ever had. Matt Wetzel's in charge of our derby. He was going through some bad times and decisions that he had to make, but we decided to go ahead with it. And the people came back, and we filled the stands again, and they had their umbrellas and their ponchos, and they watched the mud fly, and they did have a good time, and it was seventy-five degrees at our fair, the first time I can ever remember that. We had some good times, and the fireworks. I called Murray Gubler. I says, "Can you still light fireworks in the rain?" And he says, "I've got them covered." He said, "What do you think? I'm a professional." The carnival opened up after an hour and a half, and they ran till midnight, so we kind of made up for that, made up for that. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it.
It was a good fair.
Great. Very good. We're on to item four, um, emergency services. Sheriff Cory Balsimer.
We'll go ahead and kind of make this quick, um, due to time. We've had, uh, nine additional call-outs since the last report, um, that ended up with a total man-hours of seven hundred and seventy-five hours. For some reason, this last reporting, we've had a lot of people that have gotten up on top of Pine Valley and gotten, um, lost off the trails. One individual got latched up. That was a thirteen and a half hour rescue, uh, repelling. Like to thank, um, our IAC Lifelike, uh, for the support that they've been giving to us in the last little while. And just touch briefly on the fact that, uh, this last weekend, on, um, Saturday and Sunday, we hosted, uh, search and rescue training um, for the entire state, had people from twelve different agencies, including Arizona, um, that came in and participated. Daryl Cashin had to put together with a bunch of the, our local members, a bunch of scenarios, training for lost person, for dive training, major medical, minor medical. Um, they even threw a couple really interesting twists in there, and, uh, with the local group that works with the hard-of-hearing, the deaf, um, individuals, they actually came in and brought some people to come in as volunteers to go get lost. Well, when you try and find someone that's lost, a lot of time, we do a lot of noise things to try and get their attention and respond back. Well, dealing with this portion of our community really changes all those dynamics, and so it made all the individuals attending the training have to step outside the box and say, "Okay, what resources do we have? What new techniques do we have to use if we're trying to locate somebody that can't hear?" It was great exposure. The participants were incredible, and they had a blast. Um, but really, uh, good two days of training, um, and exposure for all the different teams across the state, so.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I just want to add to this. I, this isn't search and rescue, but we had two officers that were involved in a, a shooting situation, and they have been, uh, the county attorney's office has cleared those officers, but I thought, I mean, it didn't happen in unincorporated. Our deputies came to help our city officers respond, and unfortunately, it's been the news quite a bit about the dog being shot, but I'm just so glad those officers were cleared and-
Um, with you bringing that up, you know, it's one of the interesting things. We talk about the search and rescue and all the volunteers and everything else, and, um, we kind of tend to ignore those guys that are there doing the everyday job, um, whether it's those responding to calls on service, whether it's the staff that helps run the office with the civilian staff and stuff in the front office, and even those ones that are working back there, especially the guys working in the jail.
Yep.
Nobody really knows what they do or what's going on, um, but we're running a five hundred-bed facility, and basically, it's, it's a mini-city, because you're providing for every need of those individuals while they're in there. And, uh, without the support of that staff, and, you know, them just sitting there consistently doing their jobs and, and making things run smoothly, so that we can focus on other things. But, uh, yeah, definitely thank them, and also thank, uh, the cooperation we've had from the other agencies. Uh, it was quite an ordeal. Um, they have got the clearing, and we just finished up the internal affairs, and so we'll be getting them back to, um, work and back out on other shifts here in the next, uh, two days, so.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item five, consideration of update of, uh, Washington County Employment Policy and Procedures Manual regarding electronic door access. Eric?
Yeah, so commissioners, uh, we became aware that there wasn't very much consistency on, on how some access to different doors was, was being granted to employees. We weren't aware of any issues that arose due to that, but when we became aware of the inconsistency, the Human Resources Department put together a, just kind of a uniform policy that, that says, dictates how access will be granted to employees. All employees will have access during regular working hours, obviously, and then their supervisors can grant access after that.
I'm glad we're going to allow them to come to work, but it's important to keep it secure the rest of the time, so.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on that policy, Eric. I'd like to make a motion in support of the update of the County Employment Policies Procedures Manual Regarding Electronic Door Access.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. Item six, consideration of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash ten ninety-nine dash zero, an ordinance amending the general licensing provision chapter of the home occupation chapter of Washington County Code. Scott Messing.
Commissioners, I'll try to be quick. So in response to legislative updates that were made at the state level to state code and how municipalities and jurisdictions could regulate home-based businesses and business licenses, the staff has proposed, we, currently in our code we have for home-based businesses, they're called home occupations in our code, we have major and minor home occupations. And so in response to the requirements put on by the state, we modify, we are proposing to modify the ordinance to not require business licenses for minor home occupations. If, with that said, if someone, there are times that people want to get a business license. If people come in wanting to get a business license for a minor home occupation, we would grant that to them, we just wouldn't charge them the fee for it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that's the gist.
How did your planning commission, their vote or recommendation?
The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of it. One thing that they made a modification to, just one thing they added is, in our current ordinance, we have just some lists of examples of major and minor home occupations and one of them was game processing and it was put in the major home occupation or it was under the major home occupation. The planning commission felt that that should be a minor home occupation and so it was their recommendation that it be moved to minor. I can go into more detail about that type of business if you want.
No. I get, I, I used to be on a dairy farm, I'd take animals to game processing, they can be pretty.
They can be.
But if it's the occasional deer.
At the time we put it in, under major was the thoughts of, you know, the waste has to go somewhere when you're processing an animal and just it gave the, we felt like it gave staff an opportunity to make sure that those up, that any negative effect if you're a next door neighbor to someone that's processing a lot of game. Of course, if you're doing one a year, it's not a big deal, but.
Is there any kind of a threshold that they put on it?
There wasn't any threshold put on it, they just felt like it was not impactful and recommended moving it to minor.
So my only comment is, I think we should put a little cap on that one.
I think that if we defined, defined that so that if maybe you're helping your neighbor cut up his deer and it's fewer than five or something like that, I would, I would propose passing the ordinance as amended with a threshold of fewer than five, five or fewer on the game processing for a minor home occupation.
Yeah, I like that.
We have an amended motion?
So it wasn't amended, it's just a motion.
Okay, the motion.
But you're amending the.
With the ordinance, with the recommended ordinance?
So I'll, yeah, I'll go second this and I want to thank Scott. I think this is great, we're actually removing governmental burden from somebody that wants to start a home-based business. I think that like, this is good, so I thank you for that and so I second that with the amendment to the current proposed.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. I would agree with Commissioner Rindstrom, I mean, so many of our citizens have side hustles, side businesses. I mean, it's, it's just important that we, you know, not burden them with something if all they're doing is getting mail and mailing a few packages out from their homes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks. So don't go anywhere because item seven is consideration of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash eleven hundred dash zero, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Leeds from A twenty zone to PD zone hereafter, fully described in this ordinance.
Commissioners, if I may. Based upon how our ordinance is written, our PD ordinance is written, it says prior to the county commission adopting a land use ordinance having to do with the zone change, that they need to review and approve the project plan. The project plan is item number, is item, agenda item number fourteen and so my request or recommendation is that we move agenda item number fourteen before agenda item number seven. And then I, it's the same project, I could talk about it and you, I could talk about it on a whole and then you could, if you choose, approve the resolution and then approve the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to move item number fourteen to the top of our agenda now, that would be number seven and that seven would drop down below.
Have a motion to modify the agenda and move fourteen, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, the agenda is now modified and we are now considering item fourteen, which is a resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two forty-three, resolution approving Red Cliffs Vacation Villas Development Plan, located north of Harrisburg and south of Leeds in a planned development zone.
Okay, and I promised I wasn't just deployed to get out of the meeting a little bit earlier. So the, the resolution with a, with a PD development, a PD development is a little bit different and the zoning that's assigned to it is a little bit different than a standard subdivision. We have PD or planned development ordinance and it walks through very specific details that need to be in place before the zoning can be assigned to that property. And so there are several processes, one is a schematic plan, concept plan, which is more of a concept plan. The planning commission reviewed that concept plan and made comments back to the applicant. It's a really kind of a fluid process, the next step was a project plan. The project plan came before the planning commission two months ago and then there were some changes that needed to be made, so it came back again a week ago and the planning, the project plan meets all the requirements of our PD ordinance and staff feels really comfortable with the project. The project is located near Harrisburg, kind of south of Leeds, north of Hurricane and it's about fifteen acres in size. So I gave a copy of the project plan to the commission and so this resolution is approving that project plan. So what the, what the project, the PD zone is tied to the project plan and so in the future, let's say that the applicant ends up selling the property halfway through, whoever bought the project would either have to amend the project plan or go along with the project plan. And so staff, both the planning commission and staff unanimously recommend approval of the project plan, which is addressed here in this resolution. And then the follow-up, the ordinance that's the next agenda item would be, if the county commission approves the project plan, then you can recommend approval of the zone change. Claire's Mud?
So I do have a question.
Okay.
Sewer?
Yes.
So how, what, I mean.
So they, with utilities, they have a will serve letter for, from Washington County Water Conservancy District and they are working with Ash Creek Special Service District right now on coming up with a solution for that. And Jared, who is the, this is his project, is here if you have any questions for him. Before they went into, it's not all designed and before they go into too much engineering expense, they wanted to get the project plan and zone change approval, but Jared is here if you have a question.
Because this is sitting right above Quail Reservoir.
Yes.
And if there's any seepage into Quail Reservoir, our drinking, well, probably about seventy percent of our drinking water, I'm just concerned about that and so.
Yeah, it's, there's been a bunch of correspondence following up to the Washington County Water Conservancy will serve letter and they kind of brought up those concerns and so did Ash Creek and Paul Wright with DEQ. They're all very aware of the project and have those same concerns.
And Scott, before they could actually build, let's just assume that they received the appropriate approvals in this meeting, all of those environmental concerns, especially with the wastewater and sewage would have to be addressed.
Absolutely, yeah, it would just follow under our, much like any subdivision ordinance that, or any subdivision that we have come through, all of those need to be met before they can begin construction.
I am kind of curious about the renderings of the homes.
Yeah, so the.
Kind of looks like Fred Flintstone's village there, you know, so. But that's farther down the road, of course, after they get the sewer worked out.
Yeah. Flintstones didn't have a sewer, so.
Yeah.
If they.
Please.
Yes.
Because that's my major concern.
Thank you, my name's Jared Westhoff. Ash Creek's board actually voted to do a will serve letter for the project.
Okay.
And so I've met with Mike today, who's Mike Chandler, who is the director, I don't know his official title on there, but. And so we're just working through the details of how that will serve letter and the agreement will come together. And so we do have the board approval, now we're just working out the devil in the details.
So did, did Mike Chandler recommend it to the board that it be approved?
He did.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and the board did vote on that and the main discussion was today was, how do we do it so it's adequate for the project and with a little bit of eye down the road for the area? And so just trying to figure out how to appropriately do that where the political situation for sewer in that area has been difficult.
So that's the other question, is each unit going to be on their own septic system or is Ash?
No, no, Ash Creek will come out, because Ash Creek serves already Harrisburg, right?
Yeah, so Ash Creek, Ash Creek has a lift station in Harrisburg that is currently flowing at only eight percent capacity and that line is going all the way around Quail. So for Ash Creek's ability to function, they would love to see more.
Oh, okay, so this is just going to go into that line?
Yeah.
Oh.
So they'd like to see more liquid going into the line.
Okay.
There's a sewer lift station you'll see on the project plan. When we get into site planning, that might move locations within fifteen acres of the three or four sewer studies that have been done for that whole area. Generally, this has been one of the lift stations, particularly in the Somas study. So while we are just planning for our project, we have kept an eye on the regional needs.
Perfect, that answers all my questions and concerns, so thank you. So did you make a motion, Dean?
I have not made a motion, however, I will go ahead and make a motion in support of the project plan, resolution number two thousand seventeen twenty-two forty-three, a resolution approving Red Cliffs Vacation Villas Development Plan located north of Harrisburg and south of Leeds in a planned development zone.
I'll second. We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. I am glad to hear that you guys worked out your wastewater issues. We're back to item number seven, or what was originally seven. And Scott?
I don't know if there's much else to report other than just tying with this project plan approval. The property is currently zoned A twenty. There was an old, the Quail Creek RV plat was part of this project or was on this property. You know, that was back in the eighties, nothing ever happened, it was defunct. So the intent is that with, with this approval, they will then go back and amend or vacate that plat, removing that and just moving forward with the project. But we recommend, the public hearing was held and staff and planning commission unanimously recommend approval.
So I'll, I'll do this one. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash eleven zero zero dash oh, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Leeds from A twenty zone to PD zone hereafter, herein after, fully described in this ordinance.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes, thank you Scott.
Thank you.
On to item eleven, consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-seven, a resolution approving the inter-local agreement for a joint and cooperative action for explosive devices response. And I'm glad that Cory's, our Sheriff Cory Pulsimer.
This is mostly just a matter of routine. We have the bomb squad, which is federally funded and appointed and they have different areas of service. And with the bomb squad we have here in Washington County, it's actually made up of participants from the different agencies. Before they can be approved by the feds to be able to go back and go through the training and everything, we have to get this inter-local agreement. And we've had a couple individuals that have retired and are leaving off the team, so we're trying to get the new applicants in. And working with the Hurricane Valley Fire District, they've come up with a couple applicants that think might be a good fit to come back on to participate so that we maintain the five positions that we have as part of that bomb squad response team. So before they can be accepted for the application, we've got to have this memorandum with Hurricane Valley Fire District.
Very good. Pretty straightforward.
I, being a member of the Hurricane Valley Fire District and present when it discussed and had voted on this, I think that when we cooperatively work with each other, we leverage our efforts and save considerable taxpayer dollars. And so I make a motion in support of resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-seven, a resolution approving the inter-local agreement for a joint and cooperative action for explosive device response.
Second. We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, motion passes. Item nine, consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-eight, a resolution approving the expansion of the service offered by the Danron Valley Fire Special Service District to include recreation.
Commissioners, I'd be happy to speak for this one as well. When voters approved the RAP tax in two thousand and fourteen, the Danron Valley Fire Special Service District, then prior to that it was a homeowners association. They maintained a small park immediately behind the fire station that had been owned by the homeowners association. When we created the special service district there, it kind of orphaned the park a little bit and it was adopted by the fire department in an effort to try and keep a few swings and slides and a patch of grass for the grandkids and children in that area. Pending a petition from the special service district that they be allowed to actually do this and that we expand that charter to allow them to do that park was an intriguing idea and we went up and had a public hearing with the residents in Danron Valley and really there was overwhelming support in favor of this expansion of the special service district. Following that hearing, we went into a protest period and to my knowledge, there were no opposing statements filed with the clerk auditor's office that spoke against that. And so I would recommend that we approve resolution two thousand seventeen twenty-two thirty-eight that expands the services offered by the Danron Valley Fire Special Service District to include that limited recreation.
Second. We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, motion passes. Item ten is consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-nine, a resolution appointing members to the Southern Utah Sports Park Advisory Board. And I'll speak to this one, just to follow up on this, not very long ago, for quite some time our shooting sports park has been operated by a special service district. That district was set up for a variety of reasons, one of those reasons being allowing cities to participate. But it also created kind of an unnecessary layer of bureaucracy and so we've done away with that and replaced it with an advisory board. And with that is a need to reappoint an advisory board, we've kind of restructured it a little bit. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we, well, can the chair make a motion? I guess I can, I'm going to make a motion then. That we approve, the representative from Archery is Charlie Green, Cowboy Action, Bill Christensen, Mountain Men, Pete Davison, Red Cliffs Rifle and Pistol, George Geo, Practical Shooters, Ken Nelson, Purgatory Clay Shotgun Venue is John Freeman. Members of large will be Kelly Larson, Gary Davis and Dan Briggs and I'd like to make that motion and ask for a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Was there any comments on that? I apologize as a chair, I got so wrapped up in making my own motion, it's been a while, so.
It's all good.
Very good, we're on to item number twelve, consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two forty-one, a resolution approving sponsorship for various events in Washington. A resolution approving sponsorship for various events in Washington County. And we'll, um, I don't know if, we, who's, who do we want to speak to this or if we wanna just discuss this?
Well, let's, let's have, I mean, we have Roxy and Kevin here.
Very good. Roxy and Kevin, if you'll come forward.
So, um, thank you. Um, both of the, um, applications that we're going to discuss today. The representatives are here, so I will let them speak to their prospective events, if that's okay with you.
It's up to you, Chair.
Very, very good. Do we want to, um, you know, we have two purposes in, in the current resolution. One is just to, to kind of, as we grab a hold of this process, um, I'm more than happy to let them speak to their events, especially, is there concerns?
I, I wouldn't be opposed at all to having Kevin and Roxy summarize them though.
Yeah.
And, uh, tell us how their board.
And if we have any questions, we could ask them to speak directly to it.
And then if we have any questions, we've got the.
You ready to proper testimony?
Sure. It's just that both of them have been sitting here since four o'clock. For their turn. But I'll go ahead. So the first one is.
We wanna tell them, first of all, usually our meetings are not near this long, so we apologize, you know. Please come back another time. We'll, we'll show you a very efficient meeting.
Hopefully you won't have to come back another time. Uh, the first event was the Family Roots Expo that was actually held last weekend. Just for a matter of public record, I guess, um, both of these events, um, presented to our tax advisory board in May. Um, they were approved by that board to go before the commission for final approval. Why we're in this situation is because, um, they turn in, we don't give them money ahead of their event. They turn in their receipts for reimbursement after their event or at the time of their event. So I put through purchase orders, what, thirty days ago or something, anticipating that their receipts would be coming in. And that's how this whole red flag thing sort of started. So, um, in light of that, they were approved by our tab board. They're both private. They're not five oh one C three. They're private entities. Um, the Family Roots Expo was held at the Dixie Center last weekend. I, I'd really prefer that they speak to the event, if that's okay, cause I don't know how it went. I haven't gotten a report yet. Or do you have any questions that I can answer?
I think I'm, I'm fine. I don't know what the other commissioners are. I think this is just kind of a, you know, a sharpening of our own process. So, so hopefully in the future, all of the approval, um, will take place prior to the events, just so that we can have any sort of deliberation at that time. I, it's almost like, you know.
Right.
And I think, I think we've discussed that.
And, and that's the thing that I feel strongly about, that, uh, when the horse is already out of the crowd. Expanses have been incurred. It, it puts the commission, I think, in an awkward place to then vote. Are we voting to approve or is it then becoming an affirmation of a decision that was already made? And since we are the legislative body, I just would like to, uh, speak in favor of the process. That would allow these to come, uh, well in advance. And, uh, I commend Roxy and the tourism boards for the hard work that they do. And, and this is just a refining process and not a reflection on, on what's happening down there at all. But, uh, I'm happy to, to, to listen and find out what it is that we are.
Very good. Well, with that, um, let's go with Family Roots Expo first, and then we'll, uh, jump to, to Zion's Canyon Music Festival.
Hi, I'm Amy English, and I'm the owner of the Family Roots Expo. So I don't know if you have any questions first that you want me to answer, if you just want me to give you.
Did you have a successful event?
We did.
Very good.
Well.
So we had about thirty-five hundred in attendance total with our two concerts and the event. And we have major sponsors that come into town. Some of those are ancestry dot com, family search, my heritage, roots magic, and living tags. And I would strongly suggest, if we do this again next year, that you guys come and meet these people. Because if they ever need a place of business to come, St. George is an awesome place.
That's a wonderful suggestion. I didn't notice in your application, you had at least a hundred and forty confirmed hotel rooms at the time of.
Yes.
Of asking for the application, so.
In fact, probably eighty percent of our presenters for the classes were from out of town, out of state.
Very good.
From Salt Lake area. Um, and we did hold it at the Dixie Convention, which brings the dollars back into our market. And I don't know if you're aware, but family history is the number one hobby in the world. So I have stats here from our website. And over a five-month period, there were over forty-seven states from the United States that looked at that website. As well as over eighty foreign countries that looked at the website. So that's all, you know, just bringing more into our market. Uh, another thing was, the, we did have a nonprofit there. We raised over four thousand dollars for the Utah National Guard families at our veterans concert.
Oh, fantastic.
So we tried to tie nonprofits in, and as well as that, we brought in the Interfaith Council. And as far as I know, this is the biggest event that the Interfaith Council has ever been involved in, and they absolutely love it and wanna come back. We had rabbis giving prayers, um, from the Lutheran Church giving prayers. So it was a great event, just to kind of bring our community together.
Oh, thank you.
I've only heard positive things about it.
Yeah, I have a daughter that attended, and she came back, came home just super jazzed about how, she thought the interfaith prayer thing was really neat.
Yeah, it gives, it's great exposure for alt base. And we did, we had three hundred and fifty youth that signed up for that event, so it was a great youth event as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Let's see, uh, Zion Canyon Music Festival. How's everything upriver?
It's going pretty well, thank you. I'm Alexander Pelton, Lex de Osevito. Uh, thanks for seeing us today. It seems we were a bit confused, of course, when we were called forward to this meeting, because we were under the impression in May. That we had dotted all of our i's and crossed all our t's and everything was good to go. Um, so it was a bit of a shock. And, and it seems that this is more of a procedural thing of figuring out where the future goes as far as paperwork. And we are curious about that as well, cause obviously we would love to be partners with, uh, Washington County Tourism Office and yourselves for many years to come. Uh, we are in our ninth annual year of Design Canyon Music Festival. Um, we've got a great event planned. It isn't ten days. So we're a little bit stressed out right now, trying to figure out all the details. Um, we have spent a good deal of this money, uh, that we thought was coming our way. Uh, from the tourism office, and we spent it on great things, advertising outside of the area. We're quite confident that our festival is, is a great thing for Washington County. Uh, definitely fills lots of hotel rooms. And just the fact that the first two words of our festival are Zion Canyon, when we advertise that around the country and the world. You know, it just puts that in people's heads. And even if they don't come to our festival, they think, oh, I haven't been to Zion in a while. We better, we better get back to there. So we feel it's a great relationship. Um, we're, we are excited by a move to the OC Tanner Amphitheater this year. So we can take advantage of those great facilities that are just up the road from where we've been the last couple of years, uh, last nine years. The other transition is that it was the Town of Springdale running the event. Uh, I've been involved since the first day. But, uh, we, Lex and I took over ownership of the event this year, partly to protect the future of the event, uh, with the changing of town councils. And the potential use of the big ball field there in Springdale for other town purposes, buildings, perhaps. We felt the best way to protect this event for the future for Washington County and for the citizens of the canyon was to take it over privately. And we do have a for-profit entity. The festival has never made a profit so far, so we're a little nervous about that. We're, we're hoping this, this might be the year, since now it's, uh, you know, our own, our own money we're playing with here. But, uh, but we are excited about this relationship and we, we do feel.
What does your relationship with the town continue to be?
Uh, it's actually, it's great. You know, some of the people on the committee were relieved to get it out of their hands. Some of them were sad to see it go. But, uh, the, the Town of Springdale, we, we wanted to ensure the community that we're still a community event. So something we proposed this year was on Friday night, anyone that lived in Springdale or worked in Springdale would get in free to the event. Just to sort of continue that feeling of the community event as well as a, a, you know, world-class festival. The Town of Springdale stepped up and decided to pay for X amount of tickets for Friday for their citizens. And, uh, they've also provided us with the infrastructure things as well. So our relationship still i- is strong. And they're excited to see it stay in the community, so I think it's, it's going well.
You know, Mayor Smith spoke very highly of it.
Yeah.
Is this being billed to the public a little bit as a public-private partnership? And I asked that question because it, in, in your application, your, your gate, you thought would be twelve thousand dollars. Yet you're asking for fifteen thousand from the county. And so it seems like, uh, I'm just wondering how it's being marketed to the public. Whether or not, uh, how the public is benefiting from.
Uh, I think that the public is benefiting from having a world-class festival right at their doorsteps that's only ten dollars a day. If this event was somewhere else, it would be a forty or fifty dollar a day event, you know, and that's been our goal. Is to try to keep it affordable for the citizens of the area. And obviously, if you just look at the citizens of the canyon, there's five hundred of us. So, you know, we, we have twenty-five hundred seats to fill. So obviously, we're marketing most of those seats to people outside of the, out of the canyon. And we have done quite a bit of advertising in Colorado, in northern Utah, Las Vegas. And, uh, with the social media, we've been advertising all over the world. So, so, uh, just from looking at surveys in the past. You know, a good deal of our guests are coming from outside of Washington County. So I know we're, we're definitely filling hotel rooms. And, uh, and, uh, I'm confident that we're getting people, as this continues to grow into a more, uh, I don't know, a, a better festival. Or a more high-end festival at a low price. We're getting people from all over the place coming to this. And we have some bands now that have fa- following all over the country, so, so we're pretty exciting. I do have, I, I've presented this, I don't know who to give it to, but there's our, our poster for the year. That suggests the entities that are sponsoring it at the top. All the sponsors are at the bottom, including Washington County Tourism Office. We have, uh, advertised that quite a bit. There's also in that packet all the, all the bills we've spent. And, and the fifteen thousand that we've asked for is primarily being spent strictly on marketing. You know, we've done radio ads in Vegas. We've done, um, magazine ads in Salt Lake and Colorado. So we are using the money appropriately, uh, according to the guidelines of the committee. So we, we feel pretty good. There are obviously lots of other expenses other than just advertising for this event. So we are, like I said, we're, we're hoping for, for profit this year. Uh, otherwise, our wives are gonna be mad at us.
You might need to form a nonprofit.
We had talked about that. Part of the, the situation this year was that we proposed to the town that they handed this over to us at the end of this year's event. And we talked about that in February, and instead they said, here you go. It's yours today. And so we were scrambling to set up bank accounts. And LLP, tax ID numbers, all those kind of things. We knew we didn't have enough time this year to do a nonprofit. And so we're still definitely deliberating on that. Uh, but this year, we decided to sort of dive in and get it going.
Oh, good. Well, I know the, the mayor did speak that he was, he was pleased that it was going to continue. He felt like the citizens had really, really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Yeah, and we've both been there since, well, I've been there since the very beginning and, and, uh, we were honored that they entrusted it to us. And, uh, that they understood our intentions and that, that we are, you know, primarily, we wanna keep the school festival in our community and in Zion Canyon. And, uh, and that's our main goal.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank both of you. Appreciate it. Well, I guess we'll just turn the time over to Kevin to, to go over these other four really quickly as, as, um.
Yeah, appreciate the, the time. As you know, the Office of Sports and Outdoor Recreation has a, uh, a sports commission. That considers monthly applications and, and, uh, projects and things that are going on in, in relationship to sports and outdoor recreation. In the, uh, August meeting, we considered three applications. Uh, one was for the Tri-State ATV Jamboree. The, that's been going on for a number of years. Um, a, a great event with a great following. And they have about a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar budget that they use for, uh, marketing and advertising, printing and, and things like that. They came in this year, this is the first year they've, uh, approached us for funding. Um, their, their proposal or their application was for twenty thousand dollars. To assist in, in their marketing and, and advertising. Um, the commission reviewed that. And, uh, based on the nature of the event, um, the time of year that it was, um, their, their vision and growth plan. They didn't feel it warranted the twenty thousand dollars, but we're very supportive of the event because it does, uh, uh, really promote the brand and, and what we're trying to do here. Uh, so the proposal was for twenty-five hundred for the event in twenty eighteen. And that passed, uh, the, the motion passed and, and carried there. Second event was the Winter Four by Four Jamboree, which is another great event. It hasn't been going on quite as long, but it's, it's, uh, seen some great, uh, growth over the last couple of years. Um, that event is in January, which is a prime time event for us. Uh, January is a difficult time, and that's a great event that we can have, um, in the area there. Um, their request was for thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, their impact, and I, I forgot to mention the impact on the ATV Jamboree. But, uh, the ATV Jamboree is five hundred thousand economic impact. The, uh, Winter Four by Four economic impact is about eight hundred thousand. And, uh, with their event, um, their budget's not quite so big, and they're a five oh one C three. And they donate, um, their, uh, proceeds back to land agencies and, um, search and rescue and things like that. Uh, last year, they donated twenty-seven thousand dollars back. So, uh, their request for thirty-seven fifty passed unanimously as well. Um, the third one was, uh, the Nitro Circus Event. I don't know if you know about Nitro Circus? It's an incredible event, started, um, roughly about ten years ago, but in the past four years, um, they, the, these are, um, anything that can fly. Type of a, a, uh, extreme sport demo. So they build ramps and launch things off of them, and people try to fly and land them. And, uh, they've been all around the world. They've sold, um, all over the world globally, two million tickets in the last four years to their events. They sell out stadiums all over the world, massive stadiums. So they're doing a ten-year tour, anniversary tour. And, uh, propose St. George as a venue for that at Dixie State University at Legend Solar Stadium next year in May. Um, their, their event, um, is a bit more local, although they do say that, uh, thirty to forty percent of their participants are from out of town. And, uh, it puts again a great, uh, stamp and brand on this area to be selected as, as one to host one of their anniversary events. It's, it's pretty powerful. Their, uh, the real strength in their, uh, event, uh, is their, is their market. They have eleven million Facebook followers. They have eight hundred thousand YouTube, uh, followers. They are all over the place. And they did a market survey, uh, before they came here. They, they sent out a, uh, they, they produced a three-D movie that was in theaters. And, um, per capita, this area had the, uh, by far the highest attendance at that movie of any other place that they distributed that in. So they know that we've got a market for that, and that's why they chose, uh, St. George to do that. So we would get, uh, you know, the, all the benefit of their marketing. Um, they're gonna spend about sixty-five thousand dollars in marketing the event here, which is fantastic.
Well, given the success of the Derby, uh, the fair, I, I'm sure that this, this county likes to see things.
They like, they like to see things like that.
Crash.
It's quite a, quite an event. Um, they asked for fifteen thousand dollars and that passed unanimously as well. Um, the final one on the list is, uh, and that would be May of twenty eighteen. So all of these are twenty eighteen events. And the final one on the list did not go to the sports commission. Um, the, the commission has, had, um, voted that anything under twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred and below. They wouldn't require a presentation, that that could just be passed, uh, via the staff. And so I, I looked at that. This is an event that we've, um, hosted. This will be the third year for that event. It's a Western Regional USA Pickleball Tournament, uh, a great event. They had about four hundred and seventy-five participants last year. They stay about two to four nights, um, representing fourteen states and two countries. And, uh, they requested, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars this year to continue on with that. This would be the third year of funding for that event. And, and the final year in that, in that category. And so I went ahead and, uh, approved that based on their track record and, and what's gone on in the past two years. So those are the four events.
I have a question about the Tri-State Jamboree. Why such a reduction? I mean, they've been a long-established event. They, they had their most successful year last year.
Yep.
So why, um.
Why not twenty thousand?
Or somewhere.
Somewhere in between there.
Yeah.
Um, when, you know, this, this committee, um, is made up of sports folks and tourism folks, uh, city representatives and whata, whatnot. They've been doing this for a long time. And, um, probably the biggest, biggest area issue is that's in April. It's, it's a, it's a major tourism time for us. And so the, the impact of that event, um, i- isn't as needed as other events. Um, the second thing was their vision. Um, they're, they're kind of capped at where they can take that thing. And it, and it felt like in the presentation that they didn't really have any intent to change that. That they weren't gonna extend more days. Um, they weren't gonna do anything else to alter the event. They were just gonna go forward the way they were and, and just wanted some help in, in funding it. And so I think, I think the commission would be very supportive if they had some of that other vision and, and. and, and looked to be changing. But, but because there wasn't any of that, and it was a, it was more of a primetime, they felt like it didn't warrant the, uh, the, the amount that they were asking for.
Well, last year, they had to stop registration, because we had it in the fair. This year, you know, with more space and capacity, I don't know, I just, um, I don't know. I'd almost like to pull them aside, go ahead and, and vote on the others, and then send it back for consideration and some discussion. I, I think that maybe we're missing the value on it.
And they could certainly come back and present for, for additional again, um, if we want to do that.
I know they're not necessarily a dynamic group, you know. Well, I shouldn't say that. I know that, you know, they might, their presentation might have been, because I know the people, you know, involved and stuff. But I do think it, having been to their events, seen the amount of people that come, I mean, they have a couple thousand people out of town at their dinners and whatnot. So I do think it merits a little more consideration than twenty-five hundred.
It's definitely a fantastic event. There's no question about that. And it fits the brand very well, and I, I think the commission was, was very receptive of that and, and want to continue to promote and market that brand. And, and like I say, there were just some of those issues that they felt like, uh, it didn't warrant the twenty thousand that they were asking for, or they couldn't, they didn't have the data to support that. And, and what was interesting is they, they were in the same meeting as the Winter Four-by-Four Jamboree, who came in and asked for thirty-seven hundred. And the economic impact was greater for the, for the Winter Four-by-Four Jamboree. So there was a little bit of that, you know, this one's only, only needs thirty-seven hundred to be successful. Why does this one need twenty thousand? The, uh, I, I think you're right, though. There's some things there that they do. The publication that they put out is, um, very, very beneficial to tourism. They, they can't keep enough of them on the shelves. And so there may be some things like that that we could consider, consider, um, as well, and, and maybe supporting them in other ways that way.
Would you want them to come back for more, or would you want to pull it, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would like, I mean, that's a long ways from twenty to twenty-five hundred, so. And I think twenty's probably excessive by quite a bit. But somewhere in between, I'd be a little more comfortable with. But at the same time, they have to make the case. I mean, you're right. What, if, if they haven't made the case, you know, they haven't made the case, but...
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and, you know, and I'm happy to pull them in and chat with them about that. I, I kind of indicated that in the, the letter that I sent to them following the thing, that they're, you know, these are the reasons that, that, that they didn't get what they...
It's not that I, that I oppose the twenty-five hundred. So I'm okay with, if it'd be okay, um, pulling them and allowing Kevin to have additional discussion and bringing them back on another agenda.
Would you consider it, instead, uh, approving the twenty-five hundreds, then just allowing Kevin to... Look at that. I have a lot of deference for the board, but, uh...
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate as well.
I think we could give them that certainty right now, going forward, that a year out.
Very good, so.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion based upon the, the presentations and the resolutions and information in our packet, that we approve Resolution Number R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two forty-one, a resolution approving a sponsorship for various events in Washington County.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Item thirteen, Consideration of Resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two forty-two, a resolution approving, uh, Web EOC End User License Agreement between, uh, ESI Acquisition Inc. and Washington County Emergency Services. Was this...
So it's the same thing we had on the purchase order before. So this would just be the contract. I'd make a motion in support of the, uh, resolution approving the Web EOC contract that we funded earlier in Mark's purchase request, uh, Resolution R dash two thousand seventeen twenty-two forty-two.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Item, uh, fifteen, Consideration of Resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two forty-two, a resolution approving an agreement with Hughes General Contractor for the construction of Washington County Sheriff's Office Worker Housing Building. Nicole?
Yes, so I just thought, since Sheriff Pulcifer was here, if maybe we could team-tag each other, and if maybe you could explain to the commissioners a little bit more about the workers' housing building and what it's utilized for.
For you housing deputies in this building, or...
Can I? No, actually, uh, we've got some modulators, um, that, uh, it's kind of an interesting story. If you go back to when, the very reasons that we had to actually build a new jail back in ninety-five, ninety-six, is, uh, the old facility was only a ninety-bed facility. They brought in a modular for temporary housing. As they were building the new facility and getting it opened up, they moved that building over there to help house for work release inmates, those that are on the state contract, be able to go out and work in the communities. And it was expanded, um, a little bit, um, under the guise that would be a temporary housing until something more permanent, um, could be put in place. Here we are twenty years later. Um, this year, we'll be making the last payment, I believe, on the jail. And it will be paid off, and that temporary housing is still there. Uh, but it's starting to fall apart, and it's kind of, uh, getting to be quite a hazard. If you jump off the upper bunk, um, you might just go through the floor. Uh, so this is a contract to actually build the new work release building. It'll be a permanent structure that'll be available to house those contract inmates that we house from the state, um, but to put them into more of a permanent, uh, structure, but keep them separated from the rest of the facility, um, as we manage, you know, the inmates back and forth.
And so is this kind of a transition housing, are these inmates close to their release date?
Um, these ones are ones that we get on state contract that are anywhere from four to six years left. But have worked their way through the system and proven themselves to be able to change their classifications, then to be able to give special privileges and given the opportunity to work. So some of them help in the kitchens, they help with the laundry, but then they also get to the upper level where they can help, um, within the garden that we have there at the facility, and with outside maintenance. Then also the work crews that you see along the highways that help with different cleanup projects, weeding and trash pickup, so.
Well, I would like to applaud you for making that temporary housing last twenty years. Outstanding.
So, just, um, for your information, Commissioner, so we, um, put out to bid a CMGC, so a Contract Manager, General Contractor, which allows the co- the contractor, the winning contractor, to work with the architect to finalize the plans prior to construction. And, um, through the qualification process and the selection criteria that the county determined to rank all of the contractors that came in, um, with the RFP, which, by the way, we had incredibly well-qualified contractors. Each one that put a bid in was just incredible. Um, Hughes Contract, General Contractors just slightly edged ahead of the other, um, ones on the table. And so the, uh, the contract in front of you today is between Washington County and Hughes General Contracting to, um, allow the construction of the workers' housing building. And, um, if you consider it today, we would, um, ask that you do it to, um, I guess, Eric, so the county attorney would like to just review a little bit of our insurance qualifications that we have between...
A little bit of final negotiations on the language concerning the insurance, the insurance requirements. Uh, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution R dash two thousand seventeen twenty-two forty-four, consistent with the successful negotiation by the, uh, County Attorney's Office and the contractor on meeting those final insurance requirements.
I'll second that. We have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's gonna be kinda nice.
Somebody needs to help Commissioner Ren Strum in his attempt to try and name the building, because the current name that he's throwing out there isn't acceptable.
I think Pulcifer Inn is a wonderful name. I mean...
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
We can change it to Pulcifer Bed and Breakfast.
Hotel, Bed and Breakfast.
Resort.
Vacation rental.
Thank you, Sheriff, for your hard work.
Thanks.
No, we really do appreciate it. Well, with that, um, unless somebody wants to keep our meeting longer by saying more, uh, we'll stay on business.
We are.
Very good. Thank you.